Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the St. Charles County Council Meeting on November 14th. At this point, I'd like everyone to please stand. We're going to begin the meeting with a moment of silence in honor of two St. Charles County employees who passed away recently. One was Gary Files of the St. Charles County Police Department, and the other one was Mark Wilkinson with the Highway Department. I ask that you keep them in your prayers and your prayers for the family as well, and have a moment of silence to reflect on that.
Reverend Bill Sontag with the Outreast Pasture for Harvesting Christian Church will lead us in invocation, followed by the pledge and legions by Councilman Mike Ehlum.
Let's pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we come now to you. Father, I want to begin by thanking you for the freedom that you give us, not only in this room, in this county, but throughout this country. Father, I pray that, as individuals who live in this county, that are in this room and in this country, that we are grateful for that, that we are grateful for the many blessings that you have bestowed upon us, that we are grateful for the right to be able to come here in this open place without fear of harm or persecution in order to carry out government policies, Father. We thank you for that. I pray that the decisions that are made honor you. I pray that our country is continually looking towards you for a path, for the path that would lead a full country to you, Father. Father, I just pray that we would always just give up ourselves for you in order to glorify you. I pray that, as a people, we're willing to look past ourselves, but look to those that need you the most, to help them, to guide them, and to lead them in a way that would help them not only to get to know you, but to better their lives, Father. Father, please lift up these men that are sitting up here today at this council, help them just to make the decisions that would glorify you. And, Father, I want to lift up the families of the two people that were just mentioned. Death is a difficult thing to deal with. It is a hard thing. Many of us don't know where to turn. Father, I pray that these families are willing to, and they know that you are there for them, Father, that you care for them, and that you are willing to wrap your arms around them. My prayer is that they know that in those darkest hours, that you'll always be there for them, and you'll always be there to help them and lift them up, Father. And it's in your precious Son, Jesus' name, I pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Joe Brazel.
Here.
Councilmember Mike Ehlum.
Here.
Councilmember Dave Hammond.
Here.
Councilmember Joe Cronin.
Here.
Councilmember Terry Hollander.
Councilmember Mike Klinghammer.
Here.
Councilmember John Wayne.
Here.
We'll begin the meeting with a public presentation from Missouri Clean Energy District. Sir, would you please come forward? For the record, would you state your name and information?
I'm John Maslowsky. Sir, may I please pass out each one?
Yes, sir, please do so. While he's passing these out, all the information is in a binder that was passed out to you by council staff some time back. Megan Robert has worked real hard on this bill to put consumer safeguards above and beyond what the HERO program has, and we'd like to listen to what this gentleman has to say, and then as we move forward, and later in the meeting, if we have additional questions for Ms. Robert, I see her in the audience, so we'll go on from there. Yes, sir?
Thank you for your time. I am the Vice President for Renovate America and live in Kansas City. I've been working closely with Tom Dempsey as well. I represent the public-private partnership between Renovate America and the Missouri Clean Energy District. The Missouri Clean Energy District is a statewide political subdivision of the state of Missouri. The district has authority under state law for PACE transactions. PACE is property-assessed clean energy, and it is a funding mechanism for improvement of residential and commercial property, including energy-efficient air conditioning, insulated doors and windows, roofs, and this is all paid through an assessment on the homeowner or commercial owner's property tax bill. The name of our PACE financing program is HERO, which is a state-of-the-art technology and financing platform for property owners to access PACE financing. Our goal is to partner with St. Charles County to help the county and its property owners achieve its economic development, job creation, and environmental goals. We are active in three states, including Missouri. We have over 430 local government partners where HERO is being offered, and 100% of them remain partners after almost five years, a track record we are extremely proud of. The Missouri Clean Energy District has over 70 cities and counties as member communities, including six cities in St. Charles County, as well as Jackson County and the city of Kansas City, where we began offering HERO in September. In the next few minutes, we'd like to provide you with how our program will benefit St. Charles County by utilizing local contractors and creating economic development, creating the most comprehensive set of consumer protections for any form of consumer financing in the country, and helping homeowners reduce energy bills and helping St. Charles meet its clean energy goals. In short, we'll provide you the information necessary for St. Charles County to adopt Bill 4404 to become a member of the Missouri Clean Energy District at no membership cost or liability to the county. By joining the Missouri Clean Energy District, which consists of other cities and counties in Missouri, the county authorizes PACE financing in the community per the Missouri State statute, providing a service to homeowners, giving them another voluntary financing option to improve their homes through local contractors, and providing the foundation for economic development, job creation, and environmental benefits throughout the community. By chance, is the PowerPoint working? That's okay. We can follow along with the hard copy that you do have. On page two, why do governments choose PACE? PACE is an initiative that enables the financing of energy-efficient upgrades to residential and commercial buildings at no cost to taxpayers. PACE is supported by NACO, the National Association of Counties, the National League of Cities, the Federal Housing Administration, and the Veterans Administration. As seen in other states, it is commonplace for individual counties and cities to join a PACE program, both as an alternative to creating their own or to supplement their own program, and to offer greater choice to their constituents. By creating options for consumers, municipal governments can help ensure greater access to energy-efficiency financing options in every segment of their communities. Providing options is good public policy and provides the opportunity to grow the market for everyone and provide multiple options for homeowners and contractors to grow their business. Next, page three, why does Missouri need clean energy? PACE helps local economies grow and create new skilled jobs. Energy efficiency savings also reduce energy consumption and offer energy independence. A growing number of local governments in Missouri have passed a membership ordinance and joined the Missouri Clean Energy District, including Jackson County. Since launching in Jackson County in mid-September, the HERO program has already funded more than $800,000 in local home improvements, which will help to save over 3 million kilowatts of energy. The demand for the HERO program among local residents is growing, with more than 420 applications and 280 applications already approved for funding. Next, page four, in terms of our partnership with the Missouri Clean Energy District, the district partnered with Renovate America to bring PACE financing to Missouri property owners through our HERO program. The HERO platform brings private capital from around the world to meet public policy objectives and invest in critical infrastructure improvements that reduce energy consumption, boost the local economy, and create clean energy jobs. Renovate America is the nation's leading provider of residential PACE financing, bringing the company's total of widely marketed PACE bonds to 1.67 billion and in full compliance with securities laws. International demand for Renovate America's PACE bonds grew substantially, with investors from Europe joining the latest securitization and our first Asian investor joining the prior securitization. The Missouri Clean Energy District has also completed four bonded commercial PACE transactions. On page five, I'd like to touch on our industry-leading consumer safeguards. Our HERO program offers county residents an important option for financing the energy improvements. Through this innovative PACE financing solution, the county is able to offer an integrated platform that helps homeowners make energy-saving upgrades while providing safeguards through a comprehensive slate of consumer protections that are unmatched by any other form of home improvement financing. The few that I've outlined here include homeowners getting the final say. The homeowner has the ability to sign off before the contractor gets paid. Contractors are signed on to become HERO-registered contractors, knowing that they will not get paid until that homeowner is satisfied that the work has been done to their satisfaction. Everyone agrees to the rules. This is both the contractors and the homeowner. They understand from the beginning of the process, through financing, all the way through the entire assessment period. There's a support mechanism for them, and that clearly outlines the disclosures, both through the contractor as well before they sign the actual documents. We have our own support team that calls them, we call 100% of the homeowners, so that they're understanding both from the contractor end as well as through our support team, the financing terms, what the improvement is to their home, and the extent and term of the assessment. In terms of the products, these are all products that have been approved by the Department of Energy and other federal, state, and local regulatory bodies as energy-efficient. These all PACE financing products need to meet the economic benefit test, meaning that you need to save more over the useful life of the product than the cost of the product itself. And senior safeguards, we take extra care for our seniors. Anyone that's 65 or older, we have a separate seniors team that reaches out and makes sure that they understand, and many times asks that a family member also attend the phone call to make sure that they understand what their parents are getting into with this tax assessment on their property. The homeowner testimonial that I have on the bottom of this slide provides one link that you can check on YouTube. It's a testimonial link that provides one of many examples of how our HERO-registered contractors are looking out for the best interest of homeowners. The next slide, slide six, provides some written homeowner testimonials. More than nine out of 10 homeowners recommend HERO, which reflects the great consumer experience as well as the benefits homeowners are realizing, including immediate utility bill savings and safer, more comfortable homes. On page seven is a snapshot of the HERO impact. In partnership with over 430 counties and city partners and the growing list of member communities in the Missouri Clean Energy District, including Jackson County, where I mentioned, HERO has already improved the local housing stock by over $800,000 since mid-September, we believe HERO will have a similar impact in St. Charles County. As evidenced by more than 16,000 jobs we've helped create in other markets, we are committed to providing job opportunities for all approved contractors in St. Charles County. Jerry Kelly and Swiss Air Heating and Cooling are a couple of the local contractors who've already been approved as HERO-registered contractors. In the first five years of the program, we project that HERO could provide $40 million in economic stimulus in St. Charles County, create 250 new jobs, save 130 million kilowatts of energy, and improve the local housing stock by over $25 million. The last slide I have for you today that I'd like to touch on is slide eight. Adopting Board Bill 4404. By adopting this bill, St. Charles County joins the Missouri Clean Energy District at no membership cost or liability, and enables a PACE financing option in the community. By creating multiple options for consumers, the county can help ensure greater access to energy-efficiency financing options in every segment of the community. The Missouri Clean Energy District and Renovate America are excited to become one of the options from which residents may choose to provide services. The Missouri Clean Energy District and Renovate America would welcome the opportunity to contribute to improving the county's local housing stock and complement the county's economic development and job creation efforts in the county. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Also, questions are coming in from both contractors and residents about contact information for you folks, so if you would kindly pass that on to council staff some more down the lobby, we'd appreciate that.
Absolutely.
Okay? Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions? Okay. Okay, moving on. Do we have any public comments tonight? Traffic regulations require that already, or are we through that?
I think we're through them.
No public comments tonight, then. Okay? Moving on to oral report from County Executive. Mr. Ollman?
Whoa, whoa, whoa. We have--
You do have public comments?
We have public comments.
Public comments, okay, I'm sorry. Got a little stressed out a little too quickly. Anyone like to speak with any matters before the council tonight? We ask that you limit your speaking time to three minutes, and we'll alternate between persons forward and persons against a particular topic. Sir, I saw your hand first. Come on forward.
Good evening, gentlemen. My name is Alberto Lignan. I'm the President of Oak Grove Plus Homeowners Association, and this is the Vice President of the Oak Grove Plus Homeowners Association. And we actually just have a comment of inquiry with the deed of, well, not only the deed, but of common ground. What it is, is that St. Charles County did an inspection on our detention area, found out that it failed. After review, we found out that common ground was not deeded to the homeowners association. Soon after that, the contracting company deeded it to us for a dollar without us knowledge, and it got deeded to the homeowners association. With review of the detention failure report, there is damage from another homeowners association that the common ground butts up to. So I guess our comment is, I don't know, how about we can address this to the St. Charles County of who's responsible? If it's us, if it's another, if it's because it was deeded after us, if the contracting company is still responsible for the failure of the detention area?
Also, I was told that we should not be responsible for the storm waters of other subdivisions, and this particular drain, our drainage area that has failed, adjoins Cambridge Manor Three. There are three Cambridge Manor, one, two, and three drain into that, but St. Charles holds us responsible, and we're the smallest of the subdivisions surrounding that common ground.
Yeah. So, I'm not sure how, you know, under this, because this is my first time attending one of these, how about we should go to it? Because we've visited the offices here, and we're just getting missed information from, oh, it's deeded to us, but then when we go to the assessor's offices, it's not, you know, and then it's deeded to us afterwards, and--
The county Department of Community Development has sent us all email that we got, I believe, today, so they are aware of the situation, and they are trying to come up with a solution for it.
Okay. Also, our easements are so far away from this problem, this drainage area, that the contractors say they can't use our easements because they can't come in with heavy loads of rock and soil. They can't come in through our area because we are too far away from it. We're at the other end of the four and a half acres.
Mr. Mike Herbert's aware of the situation. This is way over our heads, and I think it'd be best to work with him on it, and I think you'll find him--
Who do we work with?
It's Community Development Department. His name is Mike, Michael Herbert. He is here, if you would. I didn't see you back there.
He's that guy in the back.
Yeah. I'm sure he's aware of it, and he'll do his best to work something out for you all.
Thank you.
Anyone else would like to speak on this subject?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
If I could--
Yes, sir.
I think we would do a good service to the two speakers who just spoke to us to remind them that the county has a very limited ability to deal with a private stormwater situation. And at the end of the investment of their time and their money, they may be better off actually trying to figure out a private solution between all those subdivisions. And they may want to get, and everyone will tease me for saying this, but they may want to get the service of some reasonably competent real estate development attorney to help work out a sort of a regional solution to it.
Is there a lawyer in the house?
Thank you, sir. Anyone else like to speak on another matter tonight? Yes, sir?
Good evening. My name is Tyler Heineman, 1014 Reddington Timbers Drive, St. Charles, Missouri, 63304. On August 29th, the county council voted to restrict my son's Missouri state-licensed childcare to eight children, a 20% decrease in his provider's earning potential. My family's plan was for all our children to attend the same childcare. My wife is now pregnant with our second child. The decision on August 29th disrupted our previously arranged plans, even though it would not have increased traffic. Our one car would have brought two children. I am now faced with the heartbreaking decision of separating Julian, my son, from his future sibling or from his current caretakers. In either case, I am forced to get on a waitlist and hopefully secure at least one spot at another daycare. At the August 29th meeting, the council discussed the possibility of an ordinance regarding in-home childcares, since many were unknowingly out of compliance. I am representing a group of individuals interested in in-home childcares. We have three main suggestions that we would like to see as a minimum for this ordinance. First, under Section 405.060, definitions of the Unified Development Ordinance, add a definition for "child daycare home" as a family home occupied as a permanent residence by the child daycare home provider that provides care to children and is licensed by the state of Missouri. We are intentionally leaving off a specific number of children in favor of the requirement of a state license. Further restrictions will disincentivize licensed in-home childcares. If this ordinance restricts the number of children, existing childcares at capacity will be forced to remove children. Second, the defined child daycare home should be listed under "permissive use" in 405.090B. Instead of a conditional use permit, we would be in favor of something more similar to St. Louis County's regulations. They require notification to neighbors within 300 feet of the childcare. The notification explains a petition that may be filed for a hearing to review the family home childcare, if it gets signatures from more than 50% of the properties within 300 feet. I am submitting a copy of the St. Louis County's in-home daycare regulations for your reference. Lastly, under 405.445, off-street parking requirements, no additional parking should be required for child daycare home other than the residential type use. Requiring extra parking adds a burden many residences may not physically be able to comply with. The residential parking should be enforced to protect homeowners, not prevent them from having a daycare. Please review the packet I am turning in. We would like to work with you to come to an agreement that is satisfactory for providers, parents, nearby neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Would you take those comments and give those to the council staff?
Sure.
And would you disseminate those to the council via electronic means? We will be working on daycare regulations, hopefully in the near future.
Okay. We have two more speakers I would like to--
Okay, thank you. Anyone else would like to speak regarding this issue?
Thank you for hearing us tonight. My focus tonight will be to help inform the council of the role and regulations of the state of Missouri in family home childcare licensing process. Obviously, I will not be able to include everything in such a short time. I've brought each of you a copy of the rules on licensing for family home childcare. Although cumbersome and long, I would ask that you each read it and understand the extent to which we are already regulated by. I'm also including a list of the different types of daycares. The Missouri State has regulated childcare since 1955. They have decades of experience in developing, inspecting, and maintaining childcare homes. Please do not be confused. We are not a group childcare home nor a daycare center. The rules are very different for these categories. The state recognizes this. The federal government, the IRS, actually recognizes this and has completely separate regulations for us to follow than other in-home businesses. It's done completely different. The main benefit of the family home childcare is that it is a home. It is meant to be where the provider can provide a home-like setting for these children. It's not institutional. We don't have to go way into that type of a situation. Please do not treat us like we are a public daycare center. We are not. You're lumping us into inappropriate categories simply because the correct category does not currently exist with clear definitions on the county books, nor inhibit us by costly and time-prohibitive red tape and rules and things that need done to our homes that are not going to make it maintain a home, but have it represent institutional. The county is aware that the situation needs addressed, and the best practice is to allow licensed family home childcare to operate under permissive use whereby no CUP is required. A daycare center could remain under non-permissive as a separate because it is separate from what we are. This is the right choice for families who are licensed, and home childcare has continued this in the county. Requiring a CUP for family home childcare is completely inappropriate. I am one of the few, if not the only, family home childcare in St. Charles County that has been forced to undergo the CUP process. It's bought potentially dangerous and unwanted attention to my address, the public record, the court, the sign in my front yard, notices to neighbors, and publications in the Mid-Rivers magazines. How is this in keeping with keeping the children safe? Additionally, it has lowered my earning potential by 20%, reducing my state limits from 10 to only eight. It's a reduction of 20%. This was done without all of the board's understanding of the licensing process, the ongoing licensing requirement and regulations under specific codes adopted by the county, and they do not fall into the same categories as daycare centers. I'm hoping this booklet will help the council to understand the process better. Licensed providers are listed in three separate entities, as you will see. Why if they're, we are inspected by the Department Health and Services, the Sanitation Department, and also the state fire marshal. The sanitation department is actually contacted out through St. Charles County. So if there is a problem with family home childcare, why was this not brought to the attention of St. Charles County prior to that? There's numerous pages in this booklet which go into detail. Please read them. Please do not deprive us of this. We have required several hours. We are CPR-trained, first aid, it goes on and on. Please read the regulations, understand who we are, and help us become more appropriately represented so that we can continue to care for the children under the state licensing rules. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. I believe the last two speakers spoke in reference to relaxing some of the rules for in-home daycares. Is anyone here that would like to speak for keeping those regulations the same? Seeing none, we'll allow one more speaker about in-home daycare, if someone would like to come forward.
Good evening. My name is Beverly Holleran. I'm here to speak on behalf of the St. Charles County families and why it's important that they have access to legal family home childcare. Some of you may not know that the state of Missouri has three different categories that childcare falls under. Each of these fall under the overall heading of requirements, but then each have further requirements to adhere to. In saying this, the state of Missouri has very high standards which each owner must comply to before they legally can operate. Parents have a right to choose what type of care they want for their children. Yes, there are many daycares around in St. Charles County. However, did you know that half of them have been recognized for violations? Wouldn't you, as a parent, want your child to have the best care that follows your morals and values? That is what we, as parents, look for outside the realm of a corporation daycare. Not only is family home childcare more beneficial for the child, it is in more line with parents what they want in today's society. Family home childcare are dedicated to delivering high-quality, emotionally secure, and educational childcare to children of all ages. Parents need the option of family home childcare that are both licensed and high-quality. Remember, the foundation of childcare is relationships. Preferred choice for infants and toddlers, over 90% of brain growth is between ages zero to five. More stable environment with less turnover and caregivers in a family home childcare. Cleaner and safer environment leads to fewer illnesses. More one-on-one environment. Family-focused. Cloth diapering, breast milking, nap needs, dietary wishes. Mixed age groups are closely more related to a family setting. Children are actually better behaved. It is not an institutional setting. A child can stay with a caregiver for more than one year, providing nurturing and a bonding experience. Society, children, families, employers, communities, and the nation all benefit from high-quality family home childcare. It fosters a healthy, successful, future workforce that is essential for everyone's future. Family home childcare should not be required for the restrictions, as Missouri state licensing is very-- is very inclusive. Personnel, childcare caregiver ratios, child abuse, nutrition meals, daily schedules, emergency fire, sanitation safeties, even inside-outside equipment safety, and all physical room footages have to be measured. Even license renewals are part of it. Missouri state licensing has standard yearly inspections but also the ability to drop in whenever they feel the need to. Please allow family childcare to function as one of the three categories provided by the Missouri state without any further county regulations. Thank you.
Thank you. That being three speakers on that subject, we're going to move on to another subject. Does anyone else would like to come forward to address the council on any other matter? Yes, sir?
Hi, I'm Rick Dotson of O'Fallon, Missouri. I'm here to represent the Defiance Hall Association. Out of defiance, hopefully you'll pass our bill 4397. Defiance Hall Association is made up of Mechanicsville, number 260 Masons, Asia-free and accepted Masons. We've been around since, for 148 years, and we only moved because of the TNT, and we just plan on to continue to do growth within the county, and we thank you for your vote and vote for us. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else like to speak on that topic? Anyone else like to speak on any other topic for the council this evening? Mr. Deanoff?
Members of the council, Arnie Deanoff, county resident and public advocate. There was a move last week in a tactic by our Department of Police to keep the public from participating in the honor and respect of a young West Alton resident. This was concerning the burial of an unfortunate and unresolved case. It was unfortunate that we didn't include our 400,000 caring and great residents. I'd like to say this to our police department and to our county council. This is not the St. Charles County Country Club run by a select few, but we are a total community of over 400,000 caring, compassionate residents. And I really mean that sincerely. It's unfortunate that the police chief or whoever is in charge of administration decided to keep the public away from this unfortunate event and funeral. This should never, ever happen again. Residents should be included in this respect and the honor to this young child that lost their life. After a county council member entered into a dissent decree and was fined by the Missouri Ethics Commission, it brings up that I am calling for ethics reform before the county council and all county elected officials. It also brings up the need that we're over 20 years, now 26 years, of our charter being in full effect, and we need a Charter Review Commission to review what works for county government and what doesn't. It'd be a group of citizens that would study for one year and recommend proposed changes to the electorate and the county residents. I'd like to take this opportunity and time to thank the county council for finally purchasing the new Malle Golf Course owned by the Vaderats off of Forestdale Road. This property is consisting of 153 acres and will now be combining two other parks to make over 350 acres of great parkland. It was a cost to taxpayers of $15,000 per acre for a total of $2,295,000 plus some closing costs. I would have paid $11,000 per acre or a total of $1,683,000, as I testified last January before this council urging you to buy the property. We overpaid for the property, but I do want to applaud you. It's a great investment on behalf of generations of our county to come. On the consent agenda, carpet installation was discussed last time, and there's only one bid, a single source. This is wrong. This was a company from St. Louis County and needs to be thrown out, and we need to open this up to carpet companies that are right here in St. Charles County that pay St. Charles County taxes and employ our neighbors. And finally, I want to caution you on bill number 4404. We heard a good, a lot of good things about the Clean Energy District, but I have some reservations and concerns about having, after hearing your presentation at the city of Wentzville. The pace financing and the large interest rates are of major concern.
Please wrap it up.
I want to caution the county council on these potential high-interest rates and make sure that you guard and protect our senior citizens and those less fortunate. Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak in public comments this evening? Then we'll move on to the oral report from county executive.
Mr. Chairman, Amanda Brower is going to make the report for the road board and for your consideration and hopefully approval. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank all the members of the road board for all the time that they volunteered and put in on this year's effort. We got some really good people on that road board, and they really take it seriously, and I appreciate it.
All right. Thank you, county executive. Good evening, councilman. I'm Amanda Brower. I'm the new manager of Roads and Traffic, and I'm going to present the 2017 to 2019 Transportation Improvement Plan. So as the county executive said, we have some amazing volunteers, and I would too also like to thank them. They work very hard with the objective of selecting municipal and county highway projects supported by the half-cent sales tax. The priorities of the ordinance are to fund new arterial roadways or improvements to existing arterials, congestion mitigation and safety, improvements on non-arterial roads, and economic development enhancement projects. County funds for various transportation improvements are utilized for the half-cent sales tax. Since 2007, the county's half-cent sales tax has provided over $227 million in county funding to construct over $368 million in transportation improvements. With changes in available funding from outside sources, the county funding percentage has varied by year from as little as 47 percent to as much as 88 percent of the total project cost with a 10-year average of 62 percent. This year's proposed tip will provide over $25 million in county funds to construct just under $40 million in projects, a percentage of just under 64 percent. This year's timeline included solicitations for project applications from January to May. In June, those projects were scored and presented to the road board in June and July. In July, the road board ranked the projects and made recommendations in August and September and approved the tip at our September meeting. We had 29 new applications for this year. They're broken into categories kind of based on the priorities as well as a new road study and miscellaneous category. We approved 23 of the 29 projects, and we are very excited to be able to fund so many great projects. I'd like to very quickly go through each of the projects approved so that you can just get a quick overview of what we're looking at. First one is Lake St. Louis Boulevard Phase Two. This project is a minor arterial roadway, and it will improve the pavement condition from a very, very low existing condition. It's also a safety improvement. It is federally funded and builds on a Phase One project of the adjacent roadway. The next project is Truman Road Reconstruction. This is a City of St. Charles project. It includes intersection safety improvements at West Clay with improved site distance. It also will improve the existing pavement structure, which is on grade and leads to very poor conditions. It'll also add pedestrian accessibility and access to public transit and a PED crossing at a high PED volume location. Hoff Road Improvement is a City of O'Fallon project. It is a safety improvement, adding paved shoulders and edgeline rumble strips. You can see how bad the shoulders are on that road. There's a very heavy truck volume, and there have been trucks that have tipped over along that roadway. The Weiss Road at Route N project is a county highway project. It will reconfigure the intersection to change the T going the other way. It will have an expected level of service improvement from D to B and will improve both flow, traffic flow, and safety. Bosshtown Road at Fox Hill Charleston Village is another City of St. Charles project. It is currently a side-street stop location where the side streets operate at a failing level of service. It will add a new signal at this intersection and include pedestrian and vehicular safety improvements and will accommodate growth and improve future traffic flow. The next project is Route N and Perry Cape Boulevard in the city of Wentzville. This is a new signal at this intersection. It is a warranted signal, expected to improve congestion and safety at a location very close to several schools where a number of crashes have occurred. This project was to be funded by Missouri Moves, but the program was suspended, so we will now fund half of this project. Flashing Yellow Arrow Phase Two. This is another City of St. Charles project. This includes flashing yellow arrows at 15 intersections, 10 city, five MoDOT, and flashing yellow arrows improve safety and provide more flexibility in signal timing to reduce vehicle delay. This is also funded by CMAC. Veterans Memorial Parkway at Regency. This is another City of St. Charles project. It will add a right-turn lane onto Veterans Memorial Parkway. The road board previously funded a traffic signal recommended by County Highway, Countywide Strategic Highway Safety Plan. MoDOT would like to add the right-turn lane prior to going to a signal as an alternative solution. Salt River Road at Arrowhead Industrial Boulevard, City of St. Peters project. This will improve intersection operations and reliability of an existing spanwire signal. The study will determine the most appropriate configuration. It has potential for a green-T intersection.
Amanda?
Yes?
That's similar to what we've got down at Freedens.
At Freedens and Arena Parkway.
Yeah.
Yeah. Route 364 and Muji Road interchange, City of St. Charles. This will modify the interchange to add missing access specifically to Muji Road from northeast-bound 364 and from Muji Road to southwest-bound 364, and I don't think this works for, okay, you can. So from here to here and from here to here. Okay. Route 364 at Gudermouth Road interchange. This is a county highway project. Currently, there's 4.4 miles of freeway without an interchange at this location. This reduce, this interchange will reduce traffic backups at the adjacent interchanges of Mid Rivers Mall Drive and Route K, and will improve access for those living in between those. I-70 South Outer Road, Woodlawn to Route K. This is a City of O'Fallon project. They're currently working on a I-70 project to add outer roads to the east, and this will complete the loop between Route K and Woodlawn, adding the South Outer roadway. Paul Renaud Boulevard Extension, City of O'Fallon project. It completes the last gap within the boulevard, and this, this is, road is featured on county's thoroughfare plan. So you can see that one. It's not working. Okay. West Elm Street Extension, another City of O'Fallon project. This is the, provides a connection of new roadway to Main Street, so it reconstructs the existing West Elm. Oh, I forgot to. Existing West Elm, which is that little bitty red piece kind of in the middle, and connects it with a portion of roadway built for the O'Fallon Station development, which is currently gated off, and that's the blue piece to the left. So it will complete a route connecting Woodlawn Avenue to TR Hughes north of I-70. Motherhead Road Extension is another county highway project. It will improve access between Route 94 and Motherhead Road at minimum. They will do a right-in, right-out connection, but further discussion with MoDOT will determine expanded access at this location. Convention Center Boulevard Fairgrounds Road Extension. This is a City of St. Charles project. It's the completion of planned corridor with designated right-of-way currently owned by the city. It provides direct access to the newly completed I-70 interchange for residents of adjacent neighborhoods. So this shows just the new interchange, and the road will continue to the south here, so they'll have direct access. And then we just, we're showing, this has been on Platts since 1965. It's shown in, yeah. Okay, on the bottom part of that, those Platts continuing to the right side of the screen, it's shown, and then it's shown on the left side as a 40-foot right-of-way corridor to the west of Time Center along, what is that street? Southern Oak Drive. And the completion of the Fairgrounds Road Corridor is a study submitted by the City of St. Charles to find corridor options for connections of Fairgrounds Road to First Capital Drive.
Didn't they already study that? Seems like it was, we had a preferred route already selected at one point. No?
Yeah, the City of St. Charles studied that a few years back, and with the new interchange and having access to 70, the traffic volumes that they projected in this study are just outdated. And it's also thought, does it make sense to connect the roadway up to Oak Street, up to First Capital, so it parallels Fifth Street all the way through versus how the city had it cutting through the Palter, Terror subdivision? So there's some alignment changes and also some need to look at the revised traffic volumes.
Okay.
I-64 South Outer Road Study, City of O'Fallon. It evaluates one-way outer roads from Highway 364 to DD and would provide access to 200 acres of undeveloped property. It's supported by MoDOT and surrounding municipalities. Sunbell Road Traffic Corridor Study by City of St. Charles will evaluate traffic conditions between Route 94 and Route 370, providing recommendations to improve access and traffic flow. City of Wentzville Downtown Revitalization Preliminary Design will complete a previous study to analyze the feasibility of transportation system improvements and will actually provide preliminary design of those improvements. Darden Prairie, Hanley Road north of Fizey Road. This project builds upon a previous traffic signal improvements at Fizey Road completed in 2011 via CMAC funding. This will reconstruct pavement in very poor condition and add left-turn lanes, pedestrian crosswalk, and handicap ramp. City of Wentzville, West Meyer Road, west of North Point Prairie Road. It reconstructs pavement in very poor condition. This is a future five-lane arterial roadway and will be currently constructed as a three-lane roadway designed to accommodate the future expansion and the connection to David Hockel Parkway. And finally, Orf Road. This is a Lake St. Louis project. It includes reconstruction from Highway N to Hawk Ridge Trail. This road is currently closed due to very, 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 very bad pavement. This is developer-funded by 67 percent, and the developer is also funding an outer road connecting Orf Road to Old Highway N. And then this is just a map of all the project locations, just showing where they are across the county. And that's all I have. Thank you, and let me know if you have any questions.
Thank you for your presentation. Any questions? I think you did a fine job, and I would, I spoke with the City of O'Fallon and the City of Wentzville about the Transportation Improvement Plan, and they're very thankful and grateful for all the work you folks did.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Amanda, if I could, just add one thing. I really appreciate getting a copy of it here also. It's a lot easier to follow than trying to see it up there.
No problem.
Thank you. Mr. Alman, anything else?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Moving on to consent agenda. Is there anyone who would like anything removed from the consent agenda this evening? Motion to debate? Motion to debate?
Second.
Okay. All in favor of the consent agenda?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, consent agenda passes. Moving on to items removed from consent agenda. Do we, can we, do we want to sit on this, or do you want, do you just move forward, Jennifer?
I'd love for you to move forward, please.
Okay. Mr. Elam, you had some information regarding this you've mentioned to me.
So I think Mr. Klinghammer and I have had similar discussions with some folks who are in the carpet industry, and we've had some feedback on the process, and that's why a lot of our local vendors have chosen not to submit on this. I have some thoughts on this that I'd, I'd like to talk to you about, so I would prefer that we leave it tabled for this meeting and see if we can make some progress in the next couple of weeks.
Mike and I really haven't spoken much about this. I, I have problems with doing a three-year contract on something as mundane as carpet. It is not, it's not rocket science. It's not really a commodity either. The schedule that we have, and I, and I appreciate Jennifer providing it for us, but the schedule that we have shows ten percent increases every year in the, in the carpet. And I don't know if that's going to happen or not, but I don't know why we would, we would assume a, that prices are going to go up, you know, it's three times what the inflation rate is. So for that reason, I would say, let's not do a three-year contract. There was only, it was, the opportunity to bid on it was extended. I did speak to several people about why they didn't. We have some, some issues that we need, we'll, we'll be more involved than just this one carpet bid, so I would suggest that we, for two thousand, for the projects that are going on now for sixteen and, and the ones for seventeen, that we just bid them as we need Is that, was that hold up anything on your part, Jennifer?
I don't think so. I think we've got everything already ordered off of the prior bid for our active projects. And I think like you, both of you mentioned, taking a look at our bid paperwork is something that affects across the board, so, you know, we don't have, it's not typically something for small projects that people feel is too overly onerous. Public bidding is never, I don't think, too much fun for people. So if we can take a look at that across the board, it'll impact any level of bid that we have, which is always positive. So, yeah, we'll take a look at that, and I don't think it's a problem if you just want to either leave that tabled, or if you just want to vote it down, and we can very easily bid carpet every single year, it's not a problem.
I'd like to leave it tabled. If you two are working on it, I'd also like to submit some of the bids, like the business that I work at, we bid for government bids, and some of the cities do it quite differently than the county does, and I think that'd be something that might be merit consideration as well. Mr. Alman.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, since Mr. Bamer isn't around anymore, I'll, I'll say what he said over and over again, that our process is awfully complicated for the small businesses.
Yeah.
For the amount of money they can make on a deal. We probably ought to seriously look at simplifying it if that's, if that's the kind of people that you want to, you know, to be able to get these jobs.
Yes, sir.
I don't, I don't know that we really need to continue to hold it off. I would just as soon vote it down, a three-year contract. When we're asking a small bidder, or a small supplier to know what the prices are going to be three years down the, down the road, they're going to bid high because we're asking them to accept the, the risk on it. It is, I mean, they've, they've built in ten percent a year cost escalation, and if it's over that, I don't think we could really hold it to them anyway, so.
I would be fine with that, especially after talking to a couple of suppliers. I found out that what we thought was a good thing in naming that particular type of carpet actually plays against us in this bidding process, and I can explain to you more about that offline from what I found out. So I would be fine at just coming at this a whole different way if council's good with that.
I guess if we're talking about shooting it down completely, it needs to be removed from the table, then voted down.
Make a motion, we remove it from the table.
Second.
All in favor of moving it from the table, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay.
Make a further motion that we reject the, the bid for carpet insulation and vinyl wall base replacement.
Second.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I guess I'll make a substitute motion, just ask that you return it to Executive's Office.
Sure, we can, is it, can we just return it? Is that a?
Yeah, we're withdrawing it.
Okay.
Yeah.
That saves time.
Yep.
Sure.
Okay.
Motion to return it to the County Executive's Office.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Back to the Executive's Office. I would like to continue the conversation. Appreciate if Mr. Klinghammer and Mr. Elam would contact Jennifer, and let's, let's get the conversation rolling. Okay? Mr. Greif, suit? Okay.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
I'd like, if you all would share that information that you found out also.
Be happy to.
Yeah, I think share it to the council. Okay? Good. Okay, moving on. We're going to move on to bills for final passage. Bill number forty-three ninety-five.
Bill number forty-three ninety-five, an ordinance with new, with penalty provisions creating new section 307.200 ordinances of St. Charles County, Missouri, OSCCMO relating to a new parking provision specifically parking near a public or private mailbox.
Questions or comments regarding bill forty-three ninety-five?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion that we amend bill number forty-three ninety-five and replace it with substitute bill number forty-three ninety-five.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor of, of accepting the substitute for, for debate? Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, we're accepting bill number, substitute bill number forty-three ninety-five. Questions and comments regarding bill substitute, substitute bill number forty-three ninety-five? Mr. Elam?
I would just say that I think we've done a lot better job of fixing the problem by not inconveniencing people by allowing them to, they can park in front of their mailbox when it's not mail hours, is basically what we did. We made this fit to where the post office is delivering mail. So we wanted to make sure that we weren't inconveniencing people in their own neighborhood, and if you have a party on Sunday at a graduation party, make sure that people can park as many cars as they possibly can, because your neighbors love that when you can park as many cars as you possibly can.
And we did this also for law enforcement, so if you have a street where one side's O'Fallon and one side's St. Charles County, this, this mirrors what the cities are doing too, so hopefully it'll make your all's job a bit easier too. Okay, any other questions or comments on bill forty-three ninety-five? Move on.
Substitute bill number forty-three ninety-five, an ordinance with penalty provisions creating new section 307.200 ordinances of St. Charles County, Missouri, OSCCMO relating to a new parking provision specifically parking near a public or private mailbox. Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Councilmember Elam?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Councilmember Klinghammer?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel?
Yes. Bill number forty-three ninety-six passes. Moving on to bills for introduction. Bill number forty-three ninety-seven.
Bill number forty-three ninety-seven, requested by Michael Horrberg, sponsored by Joe Brazel, an ordinance amending the zoning district map of the County of St. Charles, Missouri by rezoning land from A agricultural district to C one neighborhood commercial district as per application RZ sixteen dash eleven.
Questions or comments regarding bill forty-three ninety-seven? Seeing none, moving on to bill forty-three ninety-eight.
Bill number forty-three ninety-eight, requested by Michael Horrberg, sponsored by John White, an ordinance amending the zoning district map of the County of St. Charles, Missouri by rezoning land from R one A single-family residential district to R one B single-family residential district as per application RZ sixteen dash twelve.
Questions or comments regarding bill number forty-three ninety-eight? Seeing none, moving on to bill forty-three ninety-nine.
Bill number forty-three ninety-nine, requested by Michael Horrberg, sponsored by Mike Elam, an ordinance establishing the Guttermouth Road-Wood Glen Estates Sanitary Sewer Neighborhood Improvement District Two and ordering the preparation of plans and specifications.
Questions or comments regarding bill number forty-three ninety-nine? Seeing none, moving on to bill forty-four hundred.
Bill number forty-four hundred, requested by Michael Horrberg, sponsored by John White, an ordinance establishing the Saratoga Heights Sanitary Sewer Neighborhood Improvement District and ordering the preparation of plans and specifications.
Questions or comments regarding bill number forty-four hundred? Seeing none, moving on to bill forty-four oh one.
Bill number forty-four oh one, requested by Amanda Brower, sponsored by council as a whole, an ordinance approving the transportation improvement plan for fiscal years 2017 through 2019 and corresponding intergovernmental agreements.
Questions or comments regarding bill number forty-four oh one? Seeing none, moving on to bill forty-four oh two.
Bill number forty-four oh two, requested by Dave Todd, sponsored by council as a whole, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute an agreement with the City of Darden Prairie for certain law enforcement services, including patrol services and enforcement of certain municipal ordinances related to police services.
Questions or comments regarding bill forty-four oh two?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I, I just want to make a point here, because we've heard so much about North St. Louis County and all these, these small police departments that aren't very professional or whatever. I applaud Darden Prairie and Weldon Springs and other people for going ahead and contracting with us rather than try to do this on their own.
St. Paul.
In St. Paul, yeah, yeah.
Okay. Any other questions or comments on forty-four oh two?
I think, I think.
Yes, we have a, I'm sorry, we have a, there's a contract revision that was made that's not currently in the public packet, and I need to announce to you folks that the revised contract will be on the online packet on the November twenty-eighth meeting when this comes up for final passage. So if you're interested in the exact wording of the contract, it'll be on the next packet. Okay, moving on to bill number forty-four oh three.
Bill number forty-four oh three, requested by Scott Drachek, sponsored by council as a whole, an ordinance authorizing the county executive or his designate to execute an intergovernmental agreement with the Missouri Department of Economic Development, Division of Workforce Development, and the St. Charles County Department of Workforce and Business Development related to a grant for receipt up to fifty-nine thousand six hundred dollars for disaster, disaster recovery jobs program, DRJP.
Questions or comments regarding bill number forty-four oh three?
Bill number forty-four oh three, requested by Scott Drachek, sponsored by council as a whole, an ordinance authorizing the county executive or his designate to execute an intergovernmental agreement with the Missouri Department of Economic Development, Division of Workforce Development, and the St. Charles County Department of Workforce and Business Development related to a grant for receipt up to fifty-nine thousand six hundred dollars for disaster, disaster recovery jobs program, DRJP.
Questions or comments regarding bill number forty-four oh three? Seeing none, we move on to bill forty-four oh four.
Bill number forty-four oh four, requested by Mike Elam, sponsored by Mike Elam, an ordinance enabling St. Charles County, Missouri to join the Missouri Clean Energy District, MCED, pursuant to state statute, and stating the terms under which the county will conduct activities as a member of such district.
Questions or comments regarding bill number forty-four oh four?
I'd like to thank the gentlemen for coming tonight and explaining a little more about the PACE program, and I look forward to making use of it in the county. Thank you very much.
I thank you also for the time you met with me and all the information you gave us, okay? This is a tough decision to make. I, I do want to know that I've read everything that you sent. I also talked to Jackson County about their program, their, their, their chairman of their commission, and while they said, it's working, it's, they're happening, it's working for them. I also was, I stopped at Jerry Kelly and talked to them, and found out that they are pretty excited about the program, and they, they have a need. I was at first very concerned about the interest rates involved, but I found out that those interest rates that you're offering are significantly lower than what Jerry Kelly can offer right now. And teaming up with reputable contractors like those, folks have a lot to do with it. I also talked to, to Sam Page about St. Louis County, and they'd elected to go out on their own on this, okay? And the, the contract that was written, and she did a very fine job, not the contract, but the, this, this particular bill by Megan Robert, okay, has provisions in there, as long as you folks continue to do a great job, we hope to have a long association with you folks. But in the event that there's a problem, there's, there's, there's ways that, you know, we have to look elsewhere. So that being said, your consumer protections were very good. Megan did an outstanding job putting some additional consumer protections in, and I thank you for all your, all your time, and Mr. Dempsey, your, your efforts as well. Bear in mind that we are just doing our job vetting this thoroughly, okay? So thank you very much.
I would like to echo your comments about Megan. You did Joe Man's work on this, and I really appreciate it. So thanks for putting in all the time and effort. I think you know this program almost as well as Senator Dempsey does, so that, that was pretty good.
Yeah. And anyone else who would like their name put on this bill, please contact council staff. Okay? Okay, I think we've, we've, we've beat that horse to death, so let's move on to bill number forty-four oh five.
Bill number forty-four oh five, requested by Mike Klinghammer, sponsored by Mike Klinghammer, and this has to be read, an ordinance requiring any bill that has been substantially amended after its introduction and prior to its final passage to be placed on the next regularly scheduled council meeting agenda. Whereas section 2.602 of the Charter of St. Charles County provides that a bill which has been introduced may be amended after introduction and prior to its final passage, but any amendment must be germane to the original purpose of the bill. Whereas to ensure that the county council has adequate time to deliberate upon substantial amendments to legislation, the county council desires that any bill which has been substantially amended after its introduction and prior to its final passage be placed on the next regularly scheduled council meeting agenda and reread. And whereas the county council finds such a requirement to be in the public interest because transparency in the legislative process and the opportunity for citizens to give their input are of utmost importance, and whereas the St. Charles County Charter, Article Two, Section 2.903, authorizes the county council to determine its own rules, and whereas setting aside the council's own rule, not out of convenience, but for some mandated necessity, such as a deadline for the budget, capital plan, tax rates, and other time-sensitive matters, the county council recognizes that such bills must move forward without delay. Now therefore, being ordained by the County Council of St. Charles County, Missouri, as follows, section one, a bill that has been substantially amended after its introduction and prior to its final passage shall be carried over to the agenda for the next regularly scheduled meeting to be reread. A substantial amendment shall mean any amendment other than an amendment to correct a clerical error or other obvious mistakes or errors arising from oversight or omission. Section two, this ordinance shall be in full force and effect as of passage and approval.
Questions or comments regarding bill number forty-four oh five?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I, I don't really understand why we're considering this bill. I mean, we have the authority now. If, if somebody doesn't feel comfortable passing a bill that's had amendments to it, I mean, they can request it be tabled, and I don't know why we're even considering this at this point. Maybe somebody could explain that to me.
Sure. There's been a couple of cases where we have made substantial changes to ordinances and gone ahead and voted on them the same night. I think that it's incumbent on us to do everything we can to make our action as, as transparent to the, to the public, and it, it also just makes, makes sense to me that we shouldn't combine two different things on the same bill. I know that's commonly done in Jeff City. They, they, we'll start with one thing, and then by the time it's done, looks more like a Christmas tree with, with ornaments hanging on it. We've, we've been very judicious and haven't done that very often, but it seems to me it should be one that, it doesn't make common sense, and I, I don't think we should be able to do that at all.
I, I don't know that we need to be able to do that. I think we, we've got that now, if somebody doesn't feel comfortable with it, and I don't know of any instance since I've been on this council, that somebody has asked for a bill to be tabled because they haven't had time to, to consider it, that they asked for it to be tabled, and, and it wasn't. So I, I don't know why we're even doing this. That's my comment, and I probably won't support this bill.
Any other comments? I just have one. I don't want the public to get the, the perception that we operate like Jefferson City. We don't tag on different things. In the charter, it says that any amendment must be germane, and germane means it's, it's, we're discussing something that is related to the issue in the bill. We don't take, have something, a health department bill, and put something about the, the, the community development on it. We don't mix stuff up like they do in, in other houses of, of legislation. I think the charter language is sufficient with germane. I'm not so certain I support the, the changing from, from germane to being substantially similar. So I, I think this will slow things up, and I can see some instances where we would have to, when we make a minor change to a rezoning or PUD, we'd have to delay that applicant two more weeks to come back before the council again. So I have some concerns with it.
Joe, I'll send you the copy of It was precisely what you just said, and we did it just a few months ago.
Okay. Please send that to the whole council, then.
Sure thing.
Any other questions or comments regarding this? Bill? Okay, we're going to move on to Bill number 4406 now.
Bill number 4406, requested by Scott Lewis, sponsored by Joe Cronin, an ordinance enacting a new Section 280.010 ordinances of St. Charles County, Missouri, OSCCMO, establishing the St. Charles County Sheriff's Department Civil Process Fee Schedule.
Questions or comments regarding Bill number 4406? Scott, I'd like to thank you, just makes, making this streamlined easier, one fee fits all, it's going to be a lot easier for everybody, and not only the attorneys, but also the residents of this county, so thanks for your efforts on this. Any other questions on this one? Okay, moving on to Bill 4407.
Bill number 4407, requested by Betty Yon Kramer, sponsored by Joe Cronin, an ordinance authorizing the county executive or his designate to execute a cooperative agreement between the Missouri Department of Conservation and St. Charles County on behalf of its Parks and Recreation Department for invasive species removal in New Malle Area Park for the period of April 1, 2016, through March 31, 2017.
Questions or comments regarding Bill number 4407? Betty, let me know how that works, because I have a lot of Bush honey suck line you get rid of, too. Okay? All right. Okay. Moving on to Bill 4408.
Bill number 4408, requested by Bob Schnur, sponsored by Joe Cronin, an ordinance amending the 2016 budget adopted as ordinance 15-117 by making a supplemental appropriation of the Flood Mitigation Assistance Grant Fund in the amount of $61,518, and further amending the budget with unencumbered appropriations between categories in the 2016 general fund budget in the amount of $170,775.
Questions or comments regarding Bill 4408? Seeing none. We have no table bills to consider this evening. I do have one announcement. In your all's packet, you received a copy of St. Charles County, post-St. Charles County Council rules. That been a collaborative effort of several attorneys, several council members, and several council chairs. I'd ask you to read through it, make some suggestions. If there's portions you don't like, strike them, make comment notes, get this, either get the council rules back to the council secretaries marked up with your suggestions and ideas. The intention is to have this at a work session the first meeting of December, so I know we've got a lot of work to do with the budget, but please take some time to go through it. Again, Megan Kelly and Keith Hazelwood worked real hard on this, we appreciate their efforts, okay? Anything else?
From Fox News?
Yeah. Oh, Megan Kelly, I'm sorry. Megan Roberts. Senior citizen moment, okay? Okay. All right.
She'll go straight to the top when he gets it done.
Yeah, there you go. And anything else for this evening?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.[1771.26]